... board trustees, work study meeting, Carol from Barbara French I S C board trustees to order at six oh five P M on October tenth, twenty twenty four. For the record, board members present are Kim Reed, Eliana Harzbluth, Estha Nafir, Creole has been to be, and New Brandon Shaqman, Marjorie Burns is hung up and will be here and from this, Tara Harboshik is out of town. We do constitute a board and make conduct business on behalf of the district. The next item on our agenda is audience for guests and we have no audience for guests, participants who have signed up so we'll bypass that section and go right through through our work study discussion items. Item number three, a discussion on data. Let me address what banking was on the board members' part as this item got put on to our work study agenda. There was not concern, but there was desire on the part of board members to have a chance for us to all hear the same thing and be involved in a discussion as needed about the way we collect data and work with data and all the stuff here in the district. And that seemed to me to be a good idea. I mean, we're very up to date on a lot of data and we have data to action meetings, but we wanted a chance to all be together and do that. And Dr. Eldridge and I have invited our data geniuses here with us, Hope Keen and Dr. Chris Gillian, who understand and work with the data every day can both instruct us and educate us on what we do and use data with, how we use it, and then let us ask questions. And so at this point, I'm just going to turn it over to you guys and let you run for it.
Do you want me to give an overview to help you?
Sure.
Okay. So one of the things I think that is important with data is we get a lot of data and sometimes we don't know what to do with it. So I've asked Chris and Hope to educate us basically on what assessments that we use in our district, a timeline of when we use our data, and basically what are the, we hear all these terms on Data Suite, Lead Forward, and what do we do with them? And then some prediction tools that, so one of the things Chris does is he is Director of School Improvement, and so I would say, okay, we have all this data, now what? What do we do with it? And Hope can run any type of data and has the analytical genius mind as well. And so they're going to just give you, they've prepared a folder for you with all these great documents, and so they're going to just briefly give us an overview and then you can ask any questions regarding any data. So I'll pitch it to you.
Yes, thank you. What you'll see on the screen here is just simply a snippet of what's right in front of you. So don't feel the need to look up what is here in your folder. And so we are excited to have this opportunity. Yes, we got to meet with you all on data to action meetings in the summertime, which is so important. But you may not know this, but we have what some might call the maserati of data platforms, and so we want to be able to share with you all what a gift that is that you all have, you know, agreed to help us about your district. And so we'll have Dr. Gillian start us off here.
All right. So you guys can follow along, we've numbered your sheets, so there should be a number one. This is the basic timeline that we'll step through. And please, stop me at any point, right? Like, as we were kind of preparing, I was trying to think about like, what is each of your experiences, what is your knowledge? You guys have a pretty big variety in terms of educational experiences and knowledge, and I just want to be sure that when we leave today, we all have a common understanding of what our data practices look like in the district and how we use them. So we'll follow along through this. We're going to stop along and show you some of the tools. You might have to, and this might be more for Dr. Eldridge, but we're kind of data geek, like this is what we do for a living, so I'm going to try not to get too into the weeds. I want to keep it pretty high level to, you know, what is the purpose and the mission for how we use data? So if we get a little too into the weeds, go ahead, stop us.
Throw the challenge flag.
Right. But what we try to do is just think about a data, an assessment takes place, and then where is that going? We really took the Big Star Summit of Assessment as the framework because that's traditionally, you know, the big summative for Texas schools. So the very first thing you might notice on the data usage timeline is the summative assessment is administered, and then there's an arrow up to the top because this, all of this data is a cycle, right? So we're in a constant process of giving an assessment, then looking at that assessment, looking at how students perform, make decisions based on that data, and then we give another assessment, right? And some of that, if you think of that in terms of scale, some parts of that system are very small. They're very short cycle, they're formative, right? Like, the teacher asks a student to do a task, they see their performance, and then they use that for feedback for intervention, right? And some of the cycles are very, very large, like the STAR end of the year summit is something that immediately when we get the results, we start to break it down, we start to make sense of it, and that starts to guide everything that we do through the summer. So a lot of this takes place in scale, and some of the pieces that the teachers see and the board see, they really vary. It basically, the bigger the scale, the bigger the view, and then really the goal of all of this, and you can kind of see as you work down the process, it goes from big picture like letter grades and overall performance, and then it starts to get down to how did campuses do, and then how did teachers do, and then how did individual students do, and then all the way down to what standards are we looking at and what are the essential standards? So the whole system really gets down to each of those standards. So after the summative assessment is administered, whichever one that is, it really starts with an analysis and a communication. Obviously, there's the board report, there's the Data to Action book, which we share. All of that takes a very big picture of just the district as a whole. Most of that comes out before we get accountability ratings or official accountability ratings from the state, right? We start to look at our year-over-year comparison. Obviously, the results get shared with parents and students even before the accountability ratings come in. And then our really, our next step at the district and the campus level is we try to take that and we try to predict our accountability ratings. And this will be our first, like, stop-off point where we'll dig in a little bit deeper, but we have multiple tools and ways to do accountability predictions. We've got Acxiom, we've got On Data Suites, and we've got several different ways to do that as we go through. So in just a minute, I'm going to dive into that, but before I do, I'm going to go back. And if you can, go to page two, go to page two of. So this is a basic C F D map. I think this would look very similar for most districts across the state. Over here on the top left, you have our summative assessments. So big summative assessments are annual or biannual, and they are checking for mastery, right? So those are the assessments of mastery that are in blue. You can see STAR, Telpass, I B C, T S I, Accuplacer, S A T, A C T. As you go farther down and to the right on this chart, you get more towards the formative assessments, right? So the way to think of this is really, you've got big assessments up on the left that are checking for mastery at end of year, and then the interim assessments, they're given three to seven times a year depending on the unit, right? And each one of those, they check for mastery of standard, but they check more intermittently. And then we've got some screeners. The screeners are somewhere in the middle between formative and interim assessments. Those are MAP, MAP fluency, pre case circle. And each one of those, you know, we give MAP and MAP fluency fall, winter, and spring. And they kind of serve, they serve a dual purpose for us. They're both formative assessments because, they're formative in nature because as soon as the students take that test, we can use that to make instructional decisions, right? But they're also summative in nature because they give us an alignment and a prediction of where we're going to be on STAR. But then also, the reason I put them in the screeners category is because we have to do some screening too, right? Some screening for things like dyslexia, R T I, some of those different measures. So they serve two purposes. And then, of course, over on the bottom right are our formative assessments, so homework, student conferencing, checkpoints, pre-test quiz, classroom observations, all of those normal short-cycle assessments. So I just want to stop right there and let, give you guys a second to kind of process this assessment map and see what questions do you have for us about the different type of assessments that are administered in our district?
Well, I was, the first thing that came to mind was what about all the newcomers and how do they impact your predictions? Because surely that's a huge change.
Yeah. I mean, assessment is really just a measure to help us understand, right? So we, if we do have a newcomer, the MAP test is in Spanish, and if that student speaks Spanish or English, right, then we would administer that assessment in that home language and help get a picture of where that student is. But there's other measures too. As far as how does it affect the prediction, I think...
Because isn't there like three thousand now?
Yeah. Different levels of grades.
Yeah. So then just ones that, yeah, accounted in this group.
Correct. And we try to, our perspective, our philosophy is, we're going to teach every kid, you know, who shows up at our door, and we're going to do our best to teach them. And it does mean that some of those predictions are probably not 100% accurate because we do know it's including students who are not included in our accountability subset, right? And when we look at Acxiom, which is an accountability predictor, that includes every student that's enrolled, and that's something we really just have to navigate with our campus leaders and teach them like, yeah, we, this is not going to be 100% accurate, right? The good news is, once they remove the accountability subset, it's always going to be lower traditionally than what the actual accountability rating is. But we need to measure and assess where our students at, are at, you know, regardless of if they count in our accountability system or not, right? We're accountable to every student, so, but you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't give us a perfect measure until...
Wait, are we talking about one, one tenth of a percent? Are we talking about 10% of what you thought? The impact is what I was looking at.
Yeah, that's the beauty of the different types of assessments. So we know that our formative assessments are given, they could be given weekly, they could be given daily by teachers. And so our students who are newcomers, learning the language, the teacher's going to be able to see at least growth within all students, the poor R E B students, they're going to be able to see through these formatives and even through the screeners that we give. You know, MAP, we give it three times a year for part of that purpose is to see growth for the students. And so while yes, it is used as a predictor, if there is a campus with a higher concentration of newcomers to our schools, then that's the beauty of all of these tools that we have is we can narrow down and see where are the trends, where do we need to make sure that the teachers are zeroed in, and helps guide a campus principal for which teachers have a roster with more E Bs than another teacher does. And so, you know, that's the beauty of these layered assessments is that we're gaining multiple data points all year long. So yes, we're going to see some things off, but we also need to see their growth throughout the school year too.
I have a question, and this is all done on the campus, right? These are teachers who are hard to make sure to face our ball markets. That's a lot of work, yes ma'am? Yes ma'am?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yep. And many times, especially, you know, for our bilingual students, they take the test in both English and Spanish, right?
Equally hard.
Yes.
And so to your point, in this mid-range blue here right in the middle, the district interims are provided for teachers to administer, that gives us a zoomed-out view of how student performance is doing. If you go all the way to the formative side, you know, depending on the teacher, they may want to give those formative quizzes more frequently to have more frequent data points on their students. They may feel like I'm within at this point in the unit that I don't need to give one every single day or every week. So they do have some autonomy in how often they're giving those formatives. I love that Chris also included here that, a classroom observation, you know, a teacher walking around, hearing from students, that's a form of formative observations. It's not necessarily a test, but it's asking you to complete this task that's aligned to the standard, and now I'm checking to see whether this that you're producing for me, and then now I can give you direct feedback based on my own knowledge of that standard to help guide your work. So while it's on here, it's not necessarily all quizzes, all tests that students are sitting, providing an answer for, but it can be done in multiple ways, but all data.
Just one last point on this before we move off the map. I think one of the goals is always to try to get kids to own their own data and their own progress, right? So that's a, that's a big focus as well is to try to continue to get kids to really understand their data and own that data, right?
Is that done by chart or like back at Lovey that they have a chart, everybody has a star for where they are, and these kids have three and some have 20.
Oh, yeah.
It has it displayed to them so that either they need to get on it or...
That depends on the campus, yes ma'am. If some have, you've heard Ms. Holcomb talk about the green cup challenges with progress learning, so it just depends on the campus and the culture that they have there, the trust that they have there to be able to put those up and out, and so that's the really heavy work that our principals do with our teachers to make sure that students get set goals and then celebrate them while...
I'll also say that on the student app, they also have that mastered, what year they mastered, and they have, you know, where they are on MAP, where they scored, and it's a bet for my kids if they look at and see if they have, did I show growth or not, so with that, that student app. It's like the parent self-service, student self-service, yeah. So parents have that, have that ability as well.
And like Hope said, it varies at each campus. I know that I've been at quite a few campuses where they pre-conference before MAP, and they look at last year, the last assessment, and they say, here's where you performed, let's do some gold setting. And then also after the assessment, here's how you did, what, and it identifies in those reports specific areas for students to focus on. Sometimes though, that's how students might be grouped, is they're focusing before the next. So it's all kind of a cycle of helping students to understand where they're at, but also what is their next step throughout the process. All right, so next, we stopped off here at accountability prediction and measures, and I want to show you guys Acxiom and On Data Suites and talk about those two tools. So the first one is page three. There's a description here, like, why in the world do we have four tools? Can we not just do one? Right? And I know, but you have to be kind of in public education. We, well, first, it's important to triangulate, so we want multiple data sources. Also, each one of these tools that our district utilizes serves a slightly different purpose. On Data Suites in particular is very accurate. The predictions are available for years when the state doesn't provide a rating, so a year like this year or last year when we didn't receive an accountability rating. It's very easy to navigate, the charts are interactive, so when a user goes into On Data Suites, if they select, I had six students who, you know, met growth, it'll give those six students. So that's one of the great things is the interactive nature. C C M R measures require double checking, there's 13 different indicators, many of which are course codes, and it can be difficult to get that. We get it all in the system, but sometimes there's a delay between when the students complete the class and when that can be reflected in the measures in On Data Suites. And then all of these systems require uploading of information and data, and occasionally we have an student enroll whose ID isn't connected or has another student who has the same name, and, you know, we have to go and problem solve each one of those just to make sure that everything in the system is accurate. Acxiom is a very similar software program that lives in Ediforia. The advantage of that tool is it's really for use throughout the year, and as you go in, it will include newly enrolled students. So On Data Suites is a snapshot, it's based on a team's report that we submit, whereas Acxiom is constantly updating each day as new students enroll and their information gets logged into the system. So when an administrator wants to identify this group for accelerated instruction or a different group, they can, they're going to get all of the students currently enrolled at their campus, not just who's in their accountability piece. So that's really the tool that we use all year. Hope does a great job, you do the lead forward, so I'll let you talk about that one.
Yes, so Lead Forward, there are files that we have that we make available to the principals. So we do kind of lift that heavy load for the principals. We are providing the templates for Lead Forward, which is an organization that, you know, there are about 1,400 districts, almost 1,500 districts in the state, and over 800 districts are a part of the work that Lead Forward does. And so it's an incredible tool for us, but what it does is we are able to provide campuses with a snapshot of their data based on those templates quickly. And so just like Chris mentioned, we're not waiting on this date, we are diving in and getting after the data in the summertime and not waiting for the August delivery date because that's when, you know, we have a full understanding of that's when the work happens and adjustment happens. It's not in the middle of the school year, but over the summertime. T D A still will always give reports in August, however. Unfortunately, you know, one of the disadvantages is that they come in an Excel file, and so we know that if one coworker opens up that Excel file and accidentally removes a column, which is very common, which is why we keep backups, by the way, that the file now has to be replaced. And so that is a disadvantage of those files in Lead Forward. However, the accuracy that is provided there is a relief to the principals because they know that they can count on that resource.
One of the things on that that our principals really buy is helpful and encouraging is you can manipulate the, what's in there to make a prediction. So for example, if I'm working with a campus and they're sitting at an 88 in growth, and they want to know, what do I need to do to get to a 90? Well, we could change the number of students that got the score that they needed, a growth score, and we could say right there, we would have needed three more students to... And we could say right there, we would have needed three more students to move from here to here. And that would have changed your score, right? So it is very helpful in that sense in that you can think, not in terms of just the grade, but you can think in terms of like individual students, like exactly how many do I need to move? And then with really all three of these tools, the real power of the tool is that, okay, I need three kids. Which three? And you can click on the three, the area that you want and pull their individual scores up. And they're just really slick kind of innovative tools to really help us manipulate the data. And the whole goal of all this is like, you want to get from data to actually doing something about it as quickly as possible with as few clicks as possible. That's our goal is to get all of our leaders and teachers from getting the data to doing something with the data as quickly as possible. And remove all of the barriers of accessing it and pulling it up in different ways.
So does one of these tell you, so you have eighth graders and 25 children missed this question on World War II or whatever it was? So that you can pull that, I mean, so you can see that that many kids missed this one question on World War II and then focus on that? Is that kind of what you're saying?
I think that, not yet. That definitely comes into when we get into the alignment and intervention phases. And also, we, we start that picture big just by looking at reporting categories and standards. And then we start to really hone in on our essential standards and then start to focus on, these are the, it just kind of depends on, it kind of depends on what they missed. Sometimes it's just a question. Sometimes, you know, if we're seeing trends across a large reporting category, then that might require full curriculum changes. We might need to look at our scope and sequence and spend more time in that particular area. And sometimes they'll throw a question at you and, okay, yeah, that was a bad question. We didn't teach that, they've never asked that before. And we don't think they'll ask it again, right? And so we just keep moving and we kind of take that loss, you know, because we're going to focus on our essential standards, we're going to focus on what we think kids need. And sometimes, yeah, the state does throw questions that aren't necessarily aligned. But for the most part, we really try to narrow down into the areas where we can do this growth. And I can show some examples where we definitely do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if that's what these were actually doing for our teachers.
No, they stay a little, you want to.
Chris, do these all report to the dark blue? They don't go down into the interim?
Correct.
There's your key, Kim.
Yeah.
Is these four resources are only looking at this subitive level?
Thank you. I have that all, yes. There we go. That's what I'm trying to unwind the word.
Yes, okay. All of this goes to accountability in the subitive level.
And really only this part, only this part.
Okay, got it.
All right, so once this accountability scores get public, there is the state data and the access tool. Do we, would you prefer that we look at it, I mean, we can pull it up live here or?
Well, you can ask, which would be one of the six.
Do you like to kind of see these tools live or just look through it on paper? So basically paper or?
Okay, great.
All right, so we're on number four, it's our accountability prediction tools. The first one is Axiom, this is just one of the screenshots. So the screen, or one of the images, this is the academic growth chart. So you can see on the left, just the low did, is last year's test. On the top is this year's test. And for a student to receive a growth point for the TAMPUS or a score to receive a growth point, they have to stay in the same category or go up a category. And so for example, we had two students who were at low did not meet in 2023 who went all the way to masters in 2024. So I would want to click on that button. And I would want to know what kids went from low did not meet and in what tests? Because that's amazing, right? That's a huge jump in one year on a STAR test. And then for example, if you go down to the masters on the academic growth chart, you can see that we had 2,701 students at masters that stayed at masters. So it's a full point of growth on the masters end if they just stayed in masters, or I'm sorry. Be careful with my words. These are not people, these are scores. So if a score on the test is in masters and stays on masters, then they would get a full point. Now we had 944 that were at masters that dropped down to meets. So those students in particular, those scores in particular, would be scores that we would want to focus in on. It might have been one or two questions. If they're high probability, it was related to the written prompt. And that's one of the things we definitely discovered pretty early when we were analyzing our data was that that prompt in particular, the constructive responses did impact our scores. Especially in an area like this where we're seeing students move from masters to meet just because it's weighted so heavily. But that's, that's one view. You can click, the administrators can click on any one of those scores and see the student and the content associated with those scores. And it does similar for domain one and domain three. The next one is On Data Suites.
So for On Data Suites, when the state delivers all of our testing files, we file them, we move them into everybody, into Edgoforia, we move them into teams, our student information system, our SIS or our CISS. And that's what actually ends up being on student transcripts at the high school levels because all from the same exact data file. And so when we upload it into On Data Suites, it, it functions similarly to Axiom in the way that it starts pointing out, you know, it takes all of the STAR performance. You see that top row there, it says STAR performance and then it says CCMR and then graduation rate. So based on the files that we get, it's On Data Suite, it's going to read the file scores and give us a concise report so that we can act on it. And so here, you'll notice it took STAR performance, CCMR, and then graduation rate. You'll notice there's a raw score and then these scaled scores, okay? That is TEA's fun way of making us really use our education and evoke what it is that they're doing. So there's lots of calculations that go into raw score and Dr. Julian hinted at getting into the leads. That is the leads of how those are calculated. However, if you do want to know, I'd be happy to go and get coffee and show you the main. Would you like to learn more about that, but for our time tonight, I promise you it was simple. And then those raw scores are scaled. And then you'll see that there's a weight of the score. And so it's based on the school type, which is obviously a high school. We're looking at right here, it says CCMR. It then gets calculated into, now you'll see it says student achievement domain rating NR, not rated because. But all that to say, this is just another way that you're able to quickly access data and make sure that once we get it, we're able to start having conversations with principals, definitely with district leadership, drawing our attention to areas of celebration, having in areas that need, that we need to focus on to make sure that we're getting support from the faculty or on the table, curriculum adjustments, for awareness, all of those types of things. Any questions?
I do. I was thinking about curriculum adjustments regarding Kim's question. So if 100 kids didn't pass that, is that a curriculum adjustment? Or just pull out the question?
So we're going to take a look at what standard it is, the frequency of which that standard was addressed. Was it just that one question of that standard? Or were there multiple questions asked around that standard and our students didn't do well on any of those questions? So we have to look at both pieces, not just, oh, we were really low there, but oh, it was just the one question. And we brought the lead earlier. Or is it, ooh, we were really low on the standard and they asked four separate questions? So the students had four opportunities to show their understanding and they missed it. So then what do we need to do to go back and look at it? So those, those are all great questions that we definitely work through in the summer to have to make sure. Is our curriculum that we have poured our heart into really providing the, the number of, you know, touches for our students so that they can do well, so that they can assess the information, so they can give any type of question and be able to answer and show their understanding.
So moving on to planning and revision. As soon as we get the scores, we start to update and review our district and campus improvement plans. So this summer, we offered sessions before summer school and also after summer school to sit with campus administrators and help them update their campus improvement plans and update the data, but also think about how that data might inform or change where their priorities are, right? Maybe what we, what we might need to do differently. And then also, we go through a similar process at the district level with the district improvement plan, bringing together our directors, Ms. Holcomb leads that work. And we update not just our data, but also based on that data, our plan.
And to add to that, our incredible principals, you know, TEA delivers the data file very late in May. The last two or three years, it's been the day before school lets out is when we get our students. So our principals in the midst of end of year celebrations for the high school's graduation, all of those things. They've started their campus needs meetings with their stakeholders, so they have information. They know where they're headed and then when the scores come out, they're either confirming the direction that they're moving in or they're adding information into the CIP so that they can either advocate for more resources or just make different decisions for their campus. And so it's a very sweet and urgent time in the summer because they want to make sure that the campus improvement plan that they are tied to is going to move the metric on. And so we are able to offer data. That way the principals aren't having to take 100 clicks to find what it is that they're looking for that they can get to work faster based on these resources right here that we, we've all agreed to help. But cheers, I'll be honest.
And I'll interject there too. So being on several campuses this week, one of the principals told me, based on the data, sometimes you look at your kid's performance and you know, you're like, we've done a lot. Well, one of the principals told me what she realized was one of the classrooms at critical math time had a pregnant teacher each time, so they missed because we had a sub in there and they were out on maternity leave, so they have to monitor and adjust. And sometimes it's not always the questions, it can be the instruction. And she's like, I can't do that to those, you know, you start thinking about your cohorts of kids and you got to make sure that, okay, well, we need more math instruction because they've lost math instruction. Because, you know, you hire some young teachers, you can't say, well, I'm sorry, you can't leave right now. These are the math, critical math standards we need to cover. But I think that that's what data does, it makes predictions and it allows principals, the instructional capacity to say, I got to adjust and move my teammates around. And so when I hear that, I go, wow, we are not only looking at data, but we're looking at our individual kids to know what they need and how to intervene. And that's real life, and so I think it's important. And I, I, I think, you know, one of the things we talk about all the time is you have data, but now what? You got to really internalize it and use it. And sometimes you may not like what the data shows you, but that's how you, it's your playbook, you know? Sports teams do it all the time, they have to, we want to win for kids. So the work is important, different lens of it too.
I think that's really important. We, you know, a goal in our department is that we're not just data rich and information poor. We want our principals to see the data, use the data, move on the data now and not wait for the end of year STAR scores to come in. We want to see a problem, find a solution, bring the needs of students, that way we can make sure that we're split up in no time.
Before we move on? Okay. Alignment and intervention. So I want to just talk briefly, oh, I better not skip that one. Go up one, review performance and adjust curriculum. One of the very first steps is we're looking at our data is to think about, how does that adjust? What, if we're seeing a trend in every student struggling? And, and we did that this summer for sure. I, we've sat in the meetings and we were all going through our data and it was, okay, guys, we're going to have to really focus in on our constructive responses. So where are we embedding those across curricularly? Where are we getting students more practice with these type of prompts? And some of the, depending if the data is, you know, an urgent area and we're seeing it district wide, that might be an adjustment in the curriculum or in the scope and sequence of that curriculum. Then in terms of moving down to alignment and intervention, the first thing I listed on here was our campus accountability meetings. This is a process that we've been doing for the last three years, each fall and spring. And a member of my team or myself go out and we meet with the campus leadership team and we look at what we're trying to do with that meeting. We know that they've looked at their data, we know that they've put it into a campus improvement plan. We come back and we look at it from a solely accountability and performance rating. Now, understanding how the accountability manual, how it measures, it work. We take a look at their overall performance and then give them a chance to tell us, all right, what are you already working on? And then help them identify leverage points or things that maybe they didn't notice. And I'll tell this story, this came up a couple, two years ago when we first started doing them in the fall and we were at Field. And we hadn't really looked at, we had spent a lot of time talking about STAR and reading performance and MAP, but we had not focused in on Tellpass. And that was actually having a disproportionate effect on their domain three, which was also basically holding their whole score back, right? So just tons of kids were doing great on the overall test, but because of this one test that we really weren't giving, if I'm honest, a lot of time to, right? It was, we would bring the students in, but we weren't giving the same, at the campus, they weren't giving the same emphasis on Tellpass as they were on the MAP and the STAR. And in that meeting, we were looking at it and they're going, oh my gosh, like this is something we can move quite easily, right? We're just going to spend more practice speaking into a microphone and, you know, slowing down and enunciating because that's a test that listens to them as they speak. A lot of it was just teaching kids how to take the test, how to interact with the test. And that alone, the next year, we sat and that domain went from a zero to a four. And that had a really, really helpful effect on their overall accountability. So the purpose of those campus accountability meetings, we do tailor each one to each campus's needs, but also to what they're working on. And if we know we're going to be digging into elementary ELAR, we invite the elementary ELAR director to come in and help problem solve. But that's been a very, very positive experience. We get a lot of positive feedback from our campus leadership teams. Of course, our area directors are part of those meetings as well. And we sit down and go through the, the plan for each one of those meetings in advance with leadership before going out to the campuses, so. And those are starting next week. When we get back on 17.
And Dr. Julian won't brag on himself, as you shouldn't, but he has presented on the work that CAFD has done around campus accountability meetings at the Texas Assessment Conferences and a packed house to hear the great work that has been designed around making sure that we're meeting with all campuses and we have the record at the table, that way principals feel supported and feel like we're all in the same family, working towards the same goal. So kudos to you, more than you've done to make those really effective.
So Francisco just joined us and you, I told him about these and he goes, you do what? For everyone? Wow. Wow. That's how we, I take our job like that. Part of that is identifying, the alignment is identifying students for accelerated instruction, both through House Bill 1416, but also through RTI. And then identifying those plans for intervention. Sometimes it's a tier one, it's just creating some small groups. Sometimes those interventions are much more intensive, right? And they step up into tier two and tier three. A big part of that process is also, as Hope kind of alluded to earlier, we're continuing trying to identify all of the essential standards. I don't remember the exact number, but somebody did the calculation and thought about, how long would it take to teach every standard that's in the TEACs? And if you haven't seen them, especially the social studies, they are extensive. And I think it would take something like 40 years to teach every standard to the fidelity and the level. And so a big part of what our goal is and what we have to focus on is what is essential? What is essential for when kids leave our door? They have to have these skills to go out and be successful. And identifying what each one of those essential standards are, that is a huge part of the work that our campuses have been doing with, through their PLC. That's a huge part of the work through Solution Tree. A focus on what are the essential standards, breaking those essential standards down during that time. And then checking for mastery of that standard. And if they don't get it, what do you do? And if they do, what do you do? So each one of those different areas. Updating the standard aligned, local assessments. We shifted to online assessments in 2021, 22. In 2019, we created a plan because we knew that the state was moving towards online assessments. And we were also blessed by one-to-one to access to devices, which all of this hinges, right, on decisions of the board to support this movement, right? We couldn't do that without your support. So our students have the devices. We had a plan to transition slowly over five years to online testing. We started that plan in 2019, 2020. And then it became a pretty easy switch, pretty fast, to online testing. It was kind of a no-brainer. And then when we all came back in 21, 22, it was like, so much has changed. So much has changed. Let's just, let's just throw online testing into the mix, you know? And actually, I think it was kind of like pulling off a Band-Aid. I think it would, there was a lot of angst over that transition. And in all reality, we just really didn't even hear anything about it. So much had changed in the world in that year that really, online testing was the least of people's concern. And so, once we shifted to that online testing, one of our obligations is to make sure that students are ready for that test. It involved making sure they're getting practice, listening to text to speech and speaking into microphones. Making sure that students, you know, much to Hope's credit, they now have to know how to keyboard to do a written and constructive responses. So we've got to get programs in place, which that program is our highest usage program, by the way. I was talking to one of our ELSAs. So, and the interactive question types. There's no way to model an interactive question type on paper. So students have to regularly get used to drag and drop and multi-select and data entry. The tests, the whole multiple choice tests are a thing of the past. I mean, the tests and the assessments that we're providing now are increasingly interactive assessments where students are moving items, dragging items, speaking into microphones, listening to information as it's provided to them. So we just basically, all of that, to get back to this point, we have to update our local assessments so that they're aligned to the standards and the tasks that students are asked to do on their summer. And that's what I mean when I say, part of this is just updating our local assessments and then also updating our curriculum and our pacing calendar throughout the year. So I will stop there. Any questions so far?
Test-taking strategies have for sure changed.
Yes.
Right.
Just from homework help at my house? Like, you can't say, look at the multiple choice and plug it in. You got to know the content because you got to type in the answer. You cannot use the multiple choice to help anyone.
It's interesting because for so long, I remember as a teacher, you know, I would have this incredible lesson, of course, so engaging. And then we would put multiple choice in front of them. And so the test wasn't matching the incredible way that I was teaching. And so, kind of to the state's credit, they've changed the way they're asking kids questions. And so it's, you're right, teachers, y'all are, you're teaching in an interactive way. You're giving them activities where they're having to, you know, look at information, make decisions. You know, what's the best fit? And so then, online testing, now we're dragging and dropping, now we're filling in the blank because that's really the movement of how teaching is. And so while it's very difficult, I mean, that's, that's higher level thinking to, one, participate like that in class, but then, two, to be able to show your learning that way. It's a, it's a, it's a great move that, you know, being online is challenging, but it's, it's the way that, that kids are operating now. And so it's an incredible response to, you learn one way, but then you have to just answer. You only get four choices. And now it's really what our students now look to show us. So it's an interesting move.
So I do want to share just really quickly, this, I'm gonna go to item number six. So this is a leadership report card. We talked a lot about the standards. There are several different versions. I pulled the third grade math as a sample. Over the summer, after we got our scores, one of the first times that we talked with our campus principals, it was their first day back on contract. And we looked at our overall scores, we looked at our accountability measures. And from there, we had each campus principal identify an area of concern, something that they saw in their data that worried them. And then we asked them to dig into the specific standards and look at those. So this is a leadership report card from Lead Forward. One of the great benefits of online assessments is you can get really deep into it really quickly and get really good information. This chart is a good example. This does not take a campus leader very long to pull it all. It's about four clicks. And this report pops up for them, for their individual campus, to see how their campus was doing. There's three checkpoints. Checkpoint one is the 2022 STAR test. Checkpoint two is the 2023 STAR test. And checkpoint three is the 2024. The number that you see represented is the average percentage of questions that were correct on that standard or reporting category. So what we're ideally looking to see is a number that is increasing. So 62, 64, 65, okay? Now, before you're like, oh, man, that's such, you know, so when I look at geometry and I see a 61 and then a 40 and then a 74, I see a clear response to a curriculum deficit in 2023. We saw that 40%. I am not over that curriculum, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but I know enough to know that third grade math was pretty focused on geometry standards and geometry units last school year. And there it shows, right? We see a, really a big jump. It's really important to keep in mind, like, how frequently is that assessed? We might be talking about one question. So if you go to the back sheet, the very last sheets, there's the source data. And that tells you, for example, standard 3.2A was assessed two times, two times and two times. So there were two questions over that standard the last three years. For example, 3.4A, 4, 4, 4. That's a pretty essential standard. 3.5E was four and four, and then they reduced it to two questions. You guys all with me, last page, this yellow one. Very end. So that's the number of times it was asked in 2022, 2023 and 2024.
And the beauty of that time with our principals was, this is a new feature, but it was a great time to walk into and how to use this resource. And that was at the end of last year. So then, as the school year is rolling through, they're going to be prepared to know how to look at this report. So we were thankful for that time that the principals gave us during the summer to take a look and to take a deep dive into their own data to look at this.
I'm just waiting for someone to ask what NT means.
Not tested.
Okay, all right, all right. All the same page, right?
But that almost makes like a pattern. So if they didn't test it that first year, then they tested second year, or they didn't test it the third year.
Right.
Yeah, so you're, so obviously, you're gonna look at those patterns.
And then you look at 3.2C, not tested, not tested. Oh, there it is.
There it is, boom, too.
Right? So we have to, again, think about, what do we, what do we want kids to know? And they can test this on whatever they want, right? We're not going to try to game and figure out the state.
Then look at 3.4H I N J.
Two, two, none.
Yep.
Yeah.
Basically, you got to know it all.
Yeah.
And a lot of these are supporting standards. So, you know, particularly in the supporting, they build off of each other, right? So understanding that, we try to get to the deepest level on all of the standards. Oh, absolutely. It's, um...
But we're not comparing apples to apples, Ken. That's what this tells me. Like, if they, if one year they test a standard and our kids perform low on that and the next year they don't test the standard, then our score actually representative of a change over time in the grade level. And that would be, you know.
It's like a Granny Smith apple versus, you know, still an apple, but it's a little different. But yes, all that to say, yes, you have to look at the standards and see, was there a significant change? Did they completely shy away from a set of standards versus what they asked the year before? The beauty too of these types of reports and the work that goes into this is the coaches that we have on the ELSAs. So we have instructional coaches that are there to support the campuses. A lot of campuses share coaches. They go to this campus for a few days and then they go to that campus. But they're doing work around this to help the teachers, help the principals, to monitor and make sure that, you know, they're all collectively working well together to make sure that the data's not missed, so.
And then on that last page, as you can see, this is actually by the TEACs cluster. The first page that we looked at was sorted by the TEACs cluster. And notice that multiplication and division of whole numbers was 26 and then 20 questions and was 16 this last year. So those are the kind of things you just have to continue to think about in terms of, where do we spend our time? Where do we dig deep? And what is really essential to the next grade level as well? That's a pretty essential skill to the next grade level. So we have to continue, even if they don't test it, to really focus in and build those skills because even if they're not assessing it this year, they're going to be checking for multiplication and division of whole numbers because that's a skill we need in life. And each one of these pages breaks it down just a little bit further. You can see on like the third page, that it gets all the way down to the specific standard and then how students performed on that specific standard. One of the great things about the way that this, this is really where we stop, we start to go from big district thinking to really campus-specific instructional thinking. This will be specific to each campus. So if Blair pulls their up, they'll get Blair's students' data. If Blanton pulls their, they'll get Blanton's student data. So each person's leadership report card is going to look slightly different based on what happens in the classroom or if they encounter, the experience that Dr. Elder referenced earlier. There's might look a little bit different. We do look a lot more than just the whole score. We really try to start to dig in by standard. And then eventually, you know, to your question earlier, Kim, we get down to the individual question. And really on our local assessments as we go through. So any questions about the leadership report card?
And that's in Lead Forward.
That's actually through Lead Forward, but it's a tool that we utilize through Edge of Foria. So they have a working relationship. So it's part of a contract add-on, just part of our...
And Lead Forward also talks to ODS to on-data stream and also provides some dashboards there. So really the Masrati data.
I'm practicing my question. So obviously, if you're getting your results back in May, those kids are not moving on. So obviously, you're going to share that data with an incoming teacher at that grade level so that they would have those individual, the kids are suffering in social studies or science, whatever, from eighth grade. Those ninth grade teachers can be aware, we need to work on this. Does it matter as much for the EOC? Well, not really, we don't care for eighth grade. Because the EOCs obviously are not the same because they're very subject specific.
So for math, you would have to have a solid foundation of, you know, K-8 math in order to do well in algebra. So there is definitely some...
And English, I'd imagine, too.
Education English as well. Science, you know, we cover biology standards starting way back in elementary school. And so, science is a test that only gets tested in fifth grade and then only gets tested in eighth grade. So the sixth and seventh grade science teachers, they're all working on the standards. They're introducing new ones, they're covering old ones that were taught in elementary school. They're helping set the foundation for everything that's going to be tested in eighth grade. So part of that is biology. So you're getting snaps before you get to biology class in high school. But yes, the beauty of Edge of Foria, aware through our rostering, is that teachers are able to pull up their students in that school year, right now, first period, second period, third period. I can see how they're doing, not only on their tests this year, but I can see their state testing history in the past. And so they're, they have access to all of that through our, our data platforms.
So the biology teachers, they're talking about, you're able to pull that up?
They're able to see the eighth grade science scores from, from two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. What I also love about our dashboards is as we get new students in through our T-Rex requests where we go to the previous district and we say, hey, send us all this, this string for this student, we're able to upload that data as well. We're able to ask the state for testing history. And it's, you know, more than once a month, we're uploading that information for teachers. That way, if our student comes to us in November, we're not waiting for the next local assessment to learn something about the student. We're able to see history of testing for the students.
So when a kid comes from another district, does their student ID, that we create a new one, if their stuff comes with them on one of these platforms?
So...
Registered through education.
So the leads, ready, Kim?
Yeah.
No, we love it.
I was like, we're starting to learn.
Right, yes. We love it. You're not gonna, yes, I will not stay away from this. So a local ID, that's six-digit, is local to CFP ISD. But every student has a Texas unique ID, call it TSDS. And so no matter where they go in the state of Texas, that follows them. And that's how we're able to share data between, between districts. It used to just be on their social security number, which is what the state spent the last four to five years moving away from so that the only identifier isn't the social security number for kiddos but that they have a educational unique ID as a student in Texas. And so it's data, data's only as good as how you use it. So sometimes there are little tangles, which is job security because if we call the state to figure out what the tangle is so that we can get it corrected for our students. But all that to ensure that if we need testing history from the state, that they will provide it because we have that, that ID for them.
So for 12 years, talking about a senior, this system has been in place and their history has followed them.
Yeah. Yeah, so if I'm in a highly mobile family and I moved from Richardson, but then I'll go over to Irving and then I land in Carrollton, and then I move up to Frisco, every district is able to gather whatever learning of us that I was, was, I was able to produce of those districts before.
And just for clarity, there's, the data follows the student, but there's a group, there's people behind the scenes that make that happen. There's not a system where, like, oh, this kid enrolled and then magically, oh, like, you know, Hope will give this credit, but like, she has to run a list once a week and then she has to send and submit that list to the state. And then they send us back large numbers of files, which... which then we have to upload into various data systems and data dashboards, make sure that those are all linked up and synced, to really make sure that that happens, and that it happens effectively. So it's a, it's a human, it's a, it all comes down to humans, and, you know, skilled people that are working a lot of times behind the scenes, but always with that end goal of trying to be sure that the teacher has exactly what they need, has the best information, the most updated information, so that they can quickly go from here to the kid in front of them and helping that kid. That's the goal.
So the kids that are coming to us that are from other countries, so how do we start? So like, a kid shows up, like you said, got a number and all that. So but where do we start with the assessment? Like, how do we, what do we do with him or her, the meat breaking?
So we generally start with some, with the teacher, and just getting them feeling comfortable in school, right? Getting them comfortable and safe. And then we really start to utilize whatever our assessments are that would be appropriate. So a lot of time, that's math, is the first assessment that they might take. For example, in middle school, even though those students are never going to take a test in Spanish, we do administer for our newcomers the math in Spanish, just to get a picture of where their language is at, where their reading is at. So that's the basic idea, is as opposed to, here's the, we don't want a kid to come here, and then the first thing we do is sit them down and start administering a battery of tests to find out where they're at. So we try to get the student in, and then start to build the assessments in really the teacher's direction, or just based on whatever we want a student, right?
So they're just going to follow in and whatever happens.
Just kind of flow into the stream, and then we, we will, we adapt the tests, like I said, based on where the students are at and what their needs are, yeah. For sure. So we are into monitoring and adjusting. And along that line, I've got here the single tests and the multi-tests. So let me go back. Before I get to that, is the quarterly updates to the CIP and the DIP. So we're continually monitoring that. This is really where we start to look at our map data, our interim data. So if we go back to the beginning chart, where am I? Okay, so we've kind of been living in some of the world. We're starting to move into interims and screeners. As we're going throughout the year, we're monitoring progress throughout the year. We're looking at the interim data. Those are the assessments that as soon as they're administered, the teachers will go in, and those are the kind of questions and assessments in where, yes, we will click on the individual question, and then we will see what each student wrote, and, okay, where's the disconnect, right? Which students? And that's where the very strategic pieces for the classroom teacher really start. The single tests and the multi-tests is a couple of views in Edge of Foria. I don't know if we're doing it on time. Oh, all right, I will not display them, but I wasn't excited to show them. I will hold off. But multi-test is really a great new view. What it allows you to do is take multiple assessments and align them based on the standards. So for example, I've got last year's STAR, and then I've got fall map, and then I've got an interim, and then I've got winter map, and then I've got another interim. And it goes all the way from the student level. And I've got a screen, I've got a picture of it here. It is number five, if you're following along. So if you go to number five, there's a sample, sample multi-test template. It's the blue one. So the far right is the percent masters. The next one is the percent meets. The next one is the percent approaches, and the light green is the percent did not meet. So each one of these have to be scaled. So it doesn't do it automatically, but math gives us a linking study that connects to STAR. We utilize the STAR passing standards wherever those cut points are for that grade level. And the idea is as you're looking through, you're looking to see the number of students in masters to increase, the number of meets to increase, the number of approaches. Now, this is just a sample, this is not real data. So just so, you know, for sake of clarity, I just created this as a data view and drew some numbers in, so to give an idea of what the tool looks like. But one of the great things that I like about this tool is, Dr. Eldridge can see it all the way from the, you know, superintendent level, but you can also see it all the way down to the student level. So if you go to the second page, I've removed the student IDs, IDs. But this is a screenshot, is what it looks like. So if I were to click on a teacher's third period class, they would get a list rostered of their students, and is this in line, or is this not, right? Is this consistent? Are we seeing the growth, or are we not? So these type of tools that really help us track and monitor progress over time are really powerful tools to help teachers to see, because they're not worried about the STAR test, but they are, they care greatly about if their kids are learning and if they're progressing as they should. And it really gives that view. But this is just an example of what the screenshot would look like for each student as they're progressing through. And again, that is pretty much done for the teacher. And this, we've been seeing versions of this in data notebooks, and teachers have been doing this work for years. What we're trying to do is make it easier so that their time and energy is focused on instruction, not on creating charts to figure out where my kids are, right? We have systems that can do that work to help support our teachers and our staff.
So this is another new tool that our principals received some light training on this summer, but will be receiving training again very soon, now that we're, we've gone through the first kind of round of testing. Again, to brag on Dr. Julian, it's the collaboration that he's done with Edge of Foria that has created this. And so Dr. Julian's been working on this for about three years, to really just provide, link back to the company to say, this is what our teachers are doing, they want their data, they're looking at their data, they're pulling tests individually. Wouldn't it be neat if? And so the fact that we have this now, not only do we have this, but other districts that use Edge of Foria also now have access to this, is an incredible testament to the work that he has done. And again, who's not going to say that, but I wanted to take a moment to share. Because that's, that's an incredibly powerful tool that not all teachers have, but our teachers do because of Edge of Foria.
Through some of their training, principals again, and then what's the trickle-down thing?
I mean, that, it's accessible to every teacher anyways. It's kind of like single test was, in that you really don't have to do much besides show people that they're there, and it's so easy to get that they just use it. I mean, it really is. This mastery tracker in our single test, the single test analysis, that's the intent behind it. It isn't something where you have to do a big training, because it's one click, and it's, okay, well, there's my question, and there's the, and here's my tracking tool.
However, you have walked the directors through. The directors are fully aware, the coaches are aware, they're living the, they're living this right now. So they're all on campuses to be able to.
So it isn't something.
Teachers have changed over time, especially like our, our alternative teachers and teachers that are coming from a different vantage point, but may not have gone through traditional program and taught them how to. You can think about it, yes.
Well, that's, yes, right? It's really, it comes down to educating and helping people understand how to use the tool, and what to do with the tool. We depend very heavily on our instructional coaches to be the experts. So our model is to help, like, our directors manage it, our instructional coaches get familiar with it. And then they are really the boots on the ground who interpret, like, that help them use it, right? They would be the ones in PLC, helping them use it and helping them make use of it, and also asking the questions up. I just got a sub today, and they don't have an account. How do we get them an account? And all of those questions. So I would say our instructional coaches are absolutely amazing at really helping and coming alongside those teachers. That is a resource that our district has dedicated themselves to, that I'm, I'm just really proud that, that we have dedicated ourselves to that, because it makes so much of what we do real. I think it keeps people here. I think that level of support is something that some districts don't offer to the people.
Hope, that might be recruitment video, see if we just got the Foria.
Love that.
We got the date, we got Foria.
Yes.
Do you know what that is?
Yeah.
And then the points that Dr. Julian was saying.
And we can make shirts.
Yeah, we will show you the date.
Get those confetti guns.
Are we going to give a confetti gun? I mean.
I need one.
Yeah, 100%.
So the Edge of Foria, or Edge of Foria talk to Goalbook, like we just fought for the special education department? They talk to each other at all? Is that data that's shared between the two systems, or not really?
Edge of Foria is like the data warehouse. So what we try to do is get other assessments and other data. For example, they're doing the ULS assessments. We will take that data and move that in. Accommodations in particular. They live in other warehouses, for example, East Bed, E504, and Elevation. So those come into Test Town, and then we take them out of Test Town and automatically upload them into Edge of Foria. So, yeah, any opportunity that we can do. Generally speaking, Edge of Foria is a data warehouse, so it holds a lot of the information. And our goal is always to get as much information, for example, like box of the no reading levels, we just try to get, we get that into Edge of Foria. TSI2, SAT, ACT, all of those different assessments. I would say the only thing that Edge of Foria doesn't ingest well is the CCMR indicator pieces, the completion of the courses, which is why we really have to use a different source in ODS and School Links, School Links, for those pieces, right? There's things that, that warehouse can't do.
But your next goal should be to put specialized kids. So the kids are high-functionant, extra-star, and regular star, be able to pull their IEPs right off of that one program. So here's what they've stored, here's what they've done, here's what they continually don't seem to understand or can grasp the master of. And then just be able to pull their IEPs right off of that. For your next venture.
She's saying, every time you go to.
Just to pull IP right off of, here's what they're not getting. Especially with this multi-test view, because you can see all the time what's continually they're not understanding, so.
Yeah. And we have to continue to put pressure on vendors for that type of system interoperability. The reality is that if we can, if we, if we buy their products when they're not interoperable, and then they don't have a vested interest in going to that other company or building those connections. And Ms. Stout is, or Dr. Stout is definitely way more knowledgeable than I am. I just see the assessment side, but he, it hits on a great point, that the interoperability of these different systems and their ability to function together is really an area of focus, I think, just in public education in general.
Well, I just wanted, thank you guys, you're amazing. I just wanted us to go back to see, so you, it's not just one book, we do a lot. And then if there were any more questions or data action reports you wanted to see? Hope Kim, I'm just about anything. She's the genius, I'll brag on you. You know, any lens that we want to see or that you request, we can put that at any time. But just putting together this timeline, I thought was just key to understanding. I think our conversation over the last two days has been, we have the data now what? Because that's, we can't have all of this and then not do something with it. We have to learn to adjust and help our teachers. And I think to Eliana's point, our new teachers, our teachers that don't know what some of the data means, it's, it's a visual picture in an assistant's tool, so they don't go, I have no idea what I'm doing. Because that's real, too.
For sure. Thank you all so much.
If you have any questions or anything.
Carolyn?
I have one last comment. Y'all used the word data 63 times.
Randy? I love that you tracked that.
That's just data.
Before I presented tonight, my wife reminded me to stop using the word right.
Right.
Look for agreement, and I think I was probably a 30 or 40.
My kids are like, right?
Right.
And like, question where?
She's a poor kid.
Explanation.
She's sitting at home, she'll have a count when I get home. How many times is there, I'm sure.
So Hope and Chris also just got accepted to Innovation Academy from TEA. I don't know what they, what did they change it to, Innovation?
Innovation cohort.
Cohort. And so with that, that's a whole plan to help our schools that aren't performing as well as we'd like to, even with all this data. And it's another systematic way to guide the work. So we had their first meeting, and you guys want to share anything about that? Like, any high points you took away from that meeting?
Yeah, it was an incredible trip to Aldine, ISD, last, just last week. How? One, I grew up in Houston. I had no idea that Aldine, there's not an Aldine in Texas. It's an unincorporated area of Houston, which just blew my mind. They have almost 60,000 students there, they're at 92% EcoDisc. And through the incredible work that we are now getting to experience the learning with, and we, we've, we've had some training on the, you know, great, uh, great systems.
Systems of both grade schools, STS.
Thank you. We've had some training, another acronym. We have had some training on that. However, it was incredible to see in action the work that they've been able to do through grants that TEA does offer. So as we're looking at our data, as we're identifying campuses of need, it helps us to come back and provide more information, look, need to. And to see Aldine take such high ECODisc areas and create AFB campuses, despite everything, was really encouraging, really eye-opening. We got to go on a yellow bus to go visit a campus, which was just incredible. And, you know, anytime you get to be in a classroom with kids, even if they aren't yours, in CFB, it's just a, it was a really interesting, really neat opportunity to see the options that we could start exploring here in CFB in order to support our kids. So we're excited to share more information with Dr. Eldridge, and then when you guys want to hear about it, so.
I mean, it was great, it was eye-opening, for sure. I had never, I had never been there. When I came home, I was, I was a little bit thankful. I think it can be easy, right? When you're in the fight and you're struggling to forget that you are blessed, that we have a lot of resources, that we have community support. And, you know, we got to go to some of the really, the big turnaround campuses and see the work that they were doing. And I had just happened, two days before that, to have gone to some of our campuses and have been in classrooms. And I saw the same practices there in our own classrooms. And I was just like, man, you know, as hard, as much of a fight as it is sometimes, and you're just in it every day, but they're, I was just so encouraged, because that was a campus that had a lot of resources forward to it. I mean, they had been selective with which teachers could go on the campus, and they had been selective with which administrators were on the campus. And I would have put just about any teacher in CFB and what I saw in classrooms two days before up to theirs, and said, we were doing a pretty good job, or a pretty close job for everyone. So it was interesting to get to see kind of some different perspectives, but also to just to think about, how can we take what they've done and then apply it to our campuses to kind of take them, it's that good to great idea, right? It's, it's, we're good, right? Even our campuses that are struggling with, they've got some good things, but we've got to think of, what are the levers to, to make it show sometimes on our accountability ratings?
Well, Kim and I went to government camp last year, or the year before last. And one of the things that they did is highlight that ECODisc district, it was in Chicago, and how the children had no successes outside. But in that box, they're owning it, they're loving it, they're creating greatness within their system, because that's all they have to live for. Because once they come out here, it's just devastated. So that is one of those great to great, or great to greater, you know, greatness that they shared with us, where they don't want the drug dealers inside. They don't want. They don't want, you know, all of those things that happened on the outside and had just created an amazing system. And they all are sold 100% of that. And it changes the community. Family, it doesn't stop. Very nice.
Anything else? Cass, does this meet your expectations when you ask for us to talk about students? Because I think, I mean, we can run anything, but look at all the things we also do than just put in a book. That's, that was kind of the lens I took.
Yeah, I think it's great information. I think the board as a whole has a different conversation to have about goals. And the, the focus of goals. Because I see here collaboratively set campus and district goals. But above that is the House Bill three and board goals. And so just in doing some diving, some looking like at the different pieces, I see a gap, but I don't see it at the district level because I looked at the I P very intently and looked at the pathway. And I see like connections. But I think there's, like this information is very helpful. It's great to, I know that you guys do amazing work. I know that the teachers are doing amazing work. And this is important for the board to see this trajectory and see kind of how things come to life. Because you guys are the day, do the day to day operations of working with schools and working with campuses. But I think from a board level, we have a gap on how we're identifying goals that we are systematically tracking all the way down. So I don't think it's about setting more goals. It's about streamlining and making sure we're all in agreement on the same goal and that we know when we're going to see it once. And that's the gap that I see.
So I, you guys, thank you. Because that's probably the next folder I have. We appreciate all your work and thank you very much. So. Chris, will this count for your project if we give you the film? Chris is also my intern, so I am so proud of him. And he's finishing his superintendent certification. So we meet regularly and, you know, guiding him and coaching him has been just a joy. So one of the things he has to have is regular film. We can keep you that. So you can, when we meet with your professor. Thank you guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Let's take a five minute break and stretch our limbs. And we'll definitely come back. I don't think there's a ton of time, but we have time.
Just to kind of look at some of our structured things and various pieces. Dr. Eldridge has put together some very extensive information about our objectives and things and some of the other challenges we're looking at.
Well, I think, you know, when I heard Tara say, "We have so many goals," and I was like, "You're right, we do. We have a lot of goals. We have a lot of tools." And so I just tried to color code in your folder. I took the five objectives from the C V 2030, and then I put the arrows. That goes to the district improvement plan. So the categories from the C V 2030 are also the same category, objectives for the district improvement plan, but you can see the goals under each one, and you can see how many goals are under each one of those objectives. And then you go to the next page, and I took the same, you know, C V 2030, that's what everything's based on, and then put the superintendent management responsibilities and performance indicators. And then I also attached the H B three goals. Now, those aren't all the goals. Those are the goals we set as a district. So really, if you look at it like this, you can see that here is the main point from the C V 2030. Then you have district improvement plan, then here's the superintendent, you know, evaluation, performance, and responsibilities with all those goals, and then H B three. So you could kind of get an understanding of which one do we talk about? And under the C V 2030, that's a huge document. So, you know, each one of these objectives under C V 30 have goals under them and measures and... But I just tried to show how it all flows together. I didn't have enough... The C V 2030 document's pretty large. So there's strategies and, you know, red, green, yellow, what we've done and what we have completed or not completed. But just putting it all together, just trying to show you how many different things we have and what we measure. So that's just the lens I took based on just, you know, feedback of... I'm a visual person. I like to have it all on one sheet, like, what are we working on? What's our focus and what do we want our focus to be?
So are these the left over ones or all of it compiled? Because remember how we had already met a lot of those goals on the 2030 pamphlet that we took the other day?
Yeah, so...
Now, this is the district improvement plan.
So I just took the same categories of the C V 2030 are also the same categories for the district improvement plan. It's just the goals are different.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's why there's so many different... There's so many different things under C V 2030. Yes, we have accomplished some, but there's still a lot that are in progress. And then here's what district improvement says, and then here's our superintendent goals, and then H B three. So I just tried to give you an overview of all the different things that we use. And sometimes it can be confusing because we're like, which goal is that? Is that district improvement? Is that what we've set for you, Dr. Eldridge? Is that House Bill three? So just trying to create a visual document. And I know the wording's kind of small, but as you go larger, the pages, you have more pages. So I was trying... I mean, I've worked with this. I sent it to Tara as well. You know, do you want to look at it? You know, sometimes I wonder, "Is it vertical?" Or do we want it this way? Which one makes sense? I just tried to keep it flowing. So you guys give me feedback and where what goals or... Because I know that's the next conversation that you all have is the goals we set for the next cycle. So you... I just tried to make a picture to make things a lot cleaner and clearer, so.
Appreciate all the hard work we put in on this, and I think it is a good starting place for us to be able to do a number of things, including the upcoming superintendent One more, any questions about that specifics?
I just want to say I appreciate this, doing it all together. Because I am too a visual person, so this is very helpful.
That makes it easier to understand.
And we also called the district improvement plan the DIP. So if you wanted to put that... You know, we talk in so many acronyms. Sometimes, you know, we need to be mindful of that. We talk in code sometimes, so.
Makes great...
Yeah.
So the... This is wonderful. It is so nice to have it visually aligned, even the color coding, seeing the connections of how we designed the superintendent evaluation to also be to the collaborative vision goals. Like, I think there's some intentionality telling how the D I P and the superintendent responsibilities and goals are aligned. I am really struggling with C V 2030, if I'm very honest. And I see C V 2030 as the 10-year guiding light that was developed in 2019 before a pandemic and before the world turned upside down. And then we did online testing, and now we haven't had funding changes in six years. And we are in a different place than we were in 2019. And while I... I still value the work that the community did, and I think that we as a board, and this is my personal opinion, it is also our job to go back to the community and say, "Wow, a lot has changed, and we made a 10-year plan." And even under Chapman, we were told, "A 10-year plan may not be the best. We may need a five-year plan." And so these goals, I went back and looked. I just took the district improvement plan goal, objective one, and mapped it with House Bill three and worked my way up. And I believe in these goals. A hundred percent, I believe, are D I P goals. But when I tried to map the D I P back to C V 2030, I couldn't. And it wasn't for lack of, I think, we didn't start with C V 2030 and work our way down. It was for lack of, our current reality is not the reality we had in 2019.
Agreed.
And I am really struggling with how I think part of the goal confusion comes from, what is our five-year plan to move this district forward so we're not just living in the one year? And that's my personal opinion. I shared it with Randy today because I mapped it from board policy all the way down, and the gap that I saw was the, we are not providing a five-year plan to support the work systematically, in my opinion. Dr. Eldridge has done a great job of aligning the dots of the work we've done, or the work the district designed, we didn't do it. The wonderful staff that we have worked so hard to implement C V 2030, but some of our measures that were in C V 2030, I'm not really sure they are measuring what we wanted it to measure.
I mean, kind of, right?
Right? I mean, Randy, you saw what I sent you.
Yeah. No, I think that it is completely legitimate for us to say, "As a board, is it time to not scrap the C V 2030, but to incorporate whatever we need to do with stakeholders, with whoever would be involved in a brand-new C V 2030 process that would be whatever that we're going to call it?" You know, as I was looking at some of the materials you sent today, and I completely agree with you, dear. The reality is, the objectives of C V 2030 were planned in 2018, and it is a whole different world than it was in 2018. And I think our stakeholders would agree with us, and we want to be certain that we are keeping our focus on today's reality as well as outcomes for the future. And so I think that's something that we're going to have to spend some time with. We're not really going to be able to say, "Okay, in the next 30 minutes, let's do that." But it is something that we need to get done, and it's got to be on our agenda moving forward as we take a look at that.
I mean, Dr. Eldridge, what do you... Like, you've been in the work. You've done the dots. You've made this. You've tried to make the connection. Like, what are you seeing?
I think that, you know, anytime we set a goal, we have to, we have to be very clear. We want... Here's what we want the goal to be, and what is the evidence that you want to see to measure that? And I think when I look at the C V 2030, I agree, it was great work, but, you know, I don't... I just have a percent. It'll say 63% showed that we were successful. But what was the 63%? What was the evidence that we reached that? Because, you know, some of them, you know, can be vague, and that can be up to, well, we said 63%, but I don't know where the 63% came from. So that's the evidence I can't find is, you know, if we're going to say that we want to see, you know, we've got all... The point today, I wanted you to see, is how many resources we have to show the evidence of what we're doing. And I think that's one point, to show that, look at all these tools, online tools, we did not have five years ago, that now can measure what our students are doing. And if we're doing training and we're having our instructional coaches there, and we can show the evidence that this school can perform regardless of the student population, we want to be mindful of what we say we're going to do and show... I can pull up a report to say, "Marjorie, I want you to look at this to show that your campus exceeded," and we took that as a district lens as well. But I struggle with just some of the vagueness, and I don't think that's anybody's fault. I think, you know, no different than a student being able to take an online test now. We had to, you know, when I was a principal, we had to do it all by paper. You know, I had the red, yellow, and green dots. I'm sorting kids. But, you know, when you think about five years ago when that was written, we didn't have these resources that could actually show the evidence. And the... We met our goal. I mean, I just want... I want us to set goals that we track and show clean and clear what the evidence is. And I think that's sometimes kind of what we miss. And we set strategies that are the goals sometimes. It's goal, strategy, measurement, you know? To me, that's how my mind thinks, so that's what should be.
It's a much shorter amount of time. I think a 10-year gap is clearly unattainable because so much has changed. Just in 2018, that they were just talking about, that was multiple choice star then. Now, we're now a short answer, and we're doing it online.
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be a pandemic. It could be...
Just things. How it changed so much. I'm trying to predict something that's going to happen in 10 years, and it was just crazy. Crazy. Half the staff won't be here.
When they were developing this, we had just underwent the bond program to really build up our C C M R and our C T E facilities. And like, objective number one is develop, implement, and sustain programs to support academic achievement.
Right.
Well, since some of our metrics are the number of programs, increasing the number of programs.
Right.
Well, that's great, but are the programs themselves going to produce academic achievement? I'm really wanting to go back and really dive into...
There's a lot of that. There's a lot of that. In C V 2030, it's a lot of vagueness. It is, what exactly do you mean by programs? Because is that our C T E programs? Is that our P T A programs? What programs are you speaking of to show that end? Would you ask more?
And I think to her point, that's data driven, which is what we're trying to...
Well, I mean, if you look at the programs, you've got, you know, one high school with over 30. I mean, they're not equitable. And so then now, if we have to work backwards, it upsets, you know, our whole goal for optimizing our community. And so I just, you know, I think planning and goal setting is a benefit for all because everybody knows, you know? And then we say, you know, if our students are choosing these programs, well, why not? Because those are the questions we need to add. I was, you know, I was researching and listening to my boys that are leading projects now, and they have a model called Go, No, Go. And when they sit down and they're going to design a program, they think of everything: the funding, what is it going to do for our kids, do we have the community resources? And we either say go or no. And I think we need to do... We can't be so vague, just programs. What does that mean? Because, you know, we are now, whether testing's changing, we're getting students that have never been in American schools. And so I was at Newman Smith today, I want to brag on them, because the teachers have set, you know, stations, and they're teaching the kids how the United States schools work. And so, you know, those are things we should set as our students. What do we need to do for all students to be successful, and what does that look like specifically? And what do we need to fund? Because all these things, we can't... I mean, that's, you know, when you have so many programs and you hold on to them, that it's a return on investment and a goal of how many kids and did the program they were in provide the service that we promised? Did they get a certification? Did, you know, what was the graduation rate? All of those things, to me, are specific, and then it's not, it's not an emotional setting for our community, that we just checked a box and said, "63% want to achieve." We don't have anything... I don't have any evidence to show that. And maybe it's in a folder somewhere, but I don't know.
To that point, the funding is so different than it was five years ago. I mean, we're looking at totally different objectives now.
Totally different landscape.
Totally different landscape in first school districts around the area. I mean, all of us looking at different campuses and how can we effectively run this campus up with the money we have?
Yeah.
So I think, yes, this needs to be looked over. So what's your plan, Cass? What are you suggesting?
I don't have a plan. I think it is... Randy, I'm going to lean into you, but I can tell you what the thoughts are, but...
My initial thoughts, and are we recording this? I think...
Right.
My initial thoughts is to use one of our committees to sit down and brainstorm a target. Here's what we're going to recommend, and then the board come through and take a look at that, on the committee, and say, "You think that's a good process?" And start to, and then implement that process. Now, whether that's the governance committee, the leadership committee, or the operations committee, I think we can discuss that. I do think that part of the process is going to need to... I hate to have extra meetings on our plate, but it's going to involve us potentially giving some more time in the very near future as we move to the collaborative vision 2030.8.
Two point eight.
And to be able to say, "Okay, where's the roadmap?" I'm open to suggestions, but I like the idea of us establishing a group who will create an initial roadmap that we can all work from rather than just sit around and kind of brainstorm ideas. Thoughts?
I mean, that makes sense to me. My big question is going to be, do we feel like this is something we are supposed to do, or will we need a consultant?
Well, and that's a good question, and I really think that probably that would be something that they talk about a little bit, is that would the use of a consultant help? Obviously, that's an expense issue.
Right.
Maybe legitimately spent if necessary. But that, and also, how might we engage stakeholders from the community? And so I think that this initial process would be to kind of pull some of those pieces together so we can all take a look at it.
Because didn't we talk about getting the people that created that back together and sharing?
I think that's a valuable exercise, but it's going to be pretty frustrating because this many years after that, that's going to change quite a bit.
Well, and Brian and I talked about it yesterday, and I think what we thought is maybe we could schedule a virtual meeting and just, you know, kind of give an update and moving forward, because to get that many people together, I think that would be, you know, a challenge. But I also think too, you know, I feel like that there is so much knowledge in our district and, you know, not to say that, you know, I know that there's some talented consultants, but I always feel like the product is owned if it's some of our leadership or some people that, you know, really are in the work and you kind of... I think facilitators sometimes just, you know, they're on a time schedule or an invoice, and it's just, we kind of rush through it, and, you know, if we can make it pretty. But I feel like the talent we have in our district, I feel like we could pull people together to put a product together. And then any of you that are the, you know, I don't think it's one committee. I think it's the people that, you know, feel like they want to be a part of it, because we already have, you know, the committees. And I think that's the lens I see. I mean, I'm not really consultant-driven. That's just my own opinion. I think sometimes if you get people with different lenses and talents, you get a better product, because it's, we own here. That's just my opinion. Not to say that, you know, I know we're in a budget constraint, but if I really thought, and I can't speak off the top of my head, and I've been in education for a little bit, that I would know one that had my thinking and our thinking, like, just the vision of it.
And that makes sense to me. I think I'd more so think of like, the amount of manpower it takes to do this, and would we have the personnel to help make it happen? And so I think whoever this committee is would probably need to consult with Dr. Eldridge as a part of the potential plan, because like, this is ultimately revising a plan will impact personal time.
For sure. That would give them one more thing to do. So you have to tell us if that's even...
Well, I think, to me, I'll just, you know, I'll do some research, you know? I just tell my thoughts. But I think that the time you put into something is the product you get. And when people aren't in the passion of the product, you get, there's questions. So I think, you know, like Chris, you know, he's working on a superintendent certification, and what a blessing, you know, that he get... I mean, he get... This is part of his program, but he also gets to share, "Wow, look what he does." And so when you get people that want to write, it's almost a pipeline of the leadership development that people want to be a part of. So I can just, I'll just get my thoughts down more, you know? Sometimes I feel like, okay, I'm going over here, Randy, back in. But I think that the ones of us that, I think there's a lot of talent in the district currently.
Great.
So...
I'm going to suggest then that we turn this project over to the governance committee. Of course, that's a good idea, because Tara's not here today.
Sure, she'll be on board.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, she gave us, I mean, honestly, I created the chart, you know, thinking of the ideas and what you said.
People that are expecting to do the work or to do far the work, but to ask them to, in the next month, to just kind of brainstorm and come up with a very basic plan that would suggest, here are things that we can do to accomplish this. And I think that would be helpful, because we, in theory, have a works that is scheduled in November. I hope we might not beat it, but I think we probably will. And so I would suggest that this would be one of the main items for the discussion at that work set.
You got it, Marjorie?
Uh huh.
Ready?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, and I don't want to be a fourth deal on, you know, you create issues with Quorum and all that, but any way that I can help and support that, just let me know.
Yes, sir.
Couple of other things that we have here. One of the things that we had done, coming back from the Raise Your Hand Texas, and I wanted to revisit a couple of things there. They had recommended the circles, contacts, and different things. I have put together, I think you have one, it looks like this. This is a list of people that are in political leadership in relationship to our school district. And so if you didn't know that, or, you know, one of the things we can do is figure it out. The way this works, when I put it together, for example, Pranita Timish is our representative right now for H D 65. She did not win reelection. And so whether it's in, sometime after November, when the news swore a new rule, it'll either be just running for that seat is Mitch Little and Darryl DeBir. So one of those two will play a part. Benjamin Bongardner is incumbent. He is, will, and is running again. So he will be on the ballot, as is Michelle Beckley, who is running for that H D 63 of the two county votes. Dallas County, Lafayette, and Chia, in H D 103 is unopposed, so he will be our three rep. Julie Johnson chose not to rerun, and she is moving on, or hoping to move on. And Cassandra Hernandez and John June are the two running for that seat, so we'll see how that will play out. It's saying, just working devil, as Dan Parker is incumbent. Stephanie Draper is running for that seat also. Ben Bandine is incumbent. Sam Meppler, and then the seat that was held by Colin already has chosen not to run, and so likely Pranita Timish will not be there. May or may not be a higher level with Ian Ted Cruz running for the Senate. But Darryl Day, Julie Johnson, and Kevin Hale, one of those three will be the representative for H D 32. So as you look at this list, I would encourage, do you know any of these people? How might you reach out or support us in reaching out to contact them so we can begin to support their sitting? A classic example is Benjamin Bongardner in H D 63 as an agreed-out champion of our H B 46, 56, is that right?
Yeah, we don't have a new bill number yet, but that's the...
That's the one. He is going to help champion that. But we would like for others to get involved with that. And so, and we're just simply put this together for you in case you didn't know who these people were or weren't who they were, so.
Thanks, very helpful. Thank you. I did hear back from Tan Parker's office this week. It's also in their queue.
Okay.
And so they asked me to keep them updated. So we've got the House and Senate in the gears.
Good, awesome.
No other progress right now. It's still with the attorneys, from what I know. But they did email me back to speak and say it's in the queue.
Okay. The other thing that I had played with here a little bit for y'all is, looks like this. We are going to need to fairly quickly do a review and update of our board operating procedures. There are several things that need to happen for that. One of the things that Eliana brought this to my attention about a month ago, I've been investigating the process there, as we're looking at the role of what we are calling liaisons to committees and how that works. And moving forward, this is my suggestion, in working with a lot of nonprofits over the years and various deals, conflict of interest issues are becoming more challenging and more litigious every day, it seems like. And this is a suggestion that I would propose for us to add to our board operating procedures. And so you get a chance to look at that. We are, if this were to be implemented when I heard it today, I'm not asking for us today to do that, but we are not looking to replace someone who may have a current position. I'm going to pick on Carolyn as an example for a second. Carolyn is on the educational foundation board. As we move forward, at some point in time, she will be sliding off of that board. And at that point in time, when that happens, we will not have a new liaison who serves as a functionary on the board. It creates a potential conflict of interest because of fundraising, money donated, planning, and various things out there. And so we need to get to the point where we basically say, if you are a liaison, your job is to be a communicator, facilitator, you can see how it unfolds. This is good advice coming from a couple of different leading sources working through things. So I think that would be something for us to move to. Again, Kim right now works with some B D As. We're not asking or would not suggest that you should jump up and say, "I have to resign." That's not it. When those terms expire, we will not, we will move it into the formal liaison.
So I became the liaison for Dr. Chapman, and then immediately was taken off... So I became the liaison for Dr. Chapman, and then immediately was taken off the checking accounts and no longer hold the title to raise funds and such. So I'm more of a support.
Right. And so as all of these various things come into play, it's just one of those things that we need to codify and get into our board operating procedures so that we got it clear and we're able to always make sure that we're all practicing the same thing.
And that goes for taking on any responsibility for that group, correct?
Correct.
Not chairing any event or being chairperson of some?
There may be some times when, remember, just like with a political endorsement from the board, you have every right to endorse. You don't have any right to endorse from the board or to give any way that it implies that you are giving an endorsement from the board. So if you're, especially if PTA is a good example. Over the years, I helped volunteer with PTA projects, and that's why I'm always on the school. And you certainly still could do that and volunteer. It's just, it's avoiding the leadership part that we want to do.
Right, right. Well, I know as an elected official, that when it comes to the day, you cannot be an elected member.
Right.
Yeah, I'm appointed chairperson for certain things, but, right. I understand that part.
And then to clarify, do you mean more on the financial side? So like, are you think, like, I wouldn't want to be on the audit subcommittee for the PTA or be a treasurer or be somebody who's handling money or even, I like teacher scholarships. I stay out of that because that's, that's direct dealings with funds and with
Right.
things that could be viewed as favors.
The role of the liaison will be to facilitate regular smooth communication to and from the board.
Okay, so that's, so it's these positions. You're not suggesting like, for your child's PTA, you can't do movie night?
Right.
I was just trying to clarify.
Because you didn't invite me.
I know, right? You're saying for these roles, you're saying these are liaison roles.
Right.
Got it.
So for my curiosity, this will be communicated to the people that are in charge of these committees, right?
It's right, you know, we got it.
Right.
Well, it's up to us to tell them, remember, we can't do social media, we can't do any of these things. We're here as an ex officio member, not voting or nothing, we're just, we're here to listen.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, and this would come as a group when we update the board operating procedures. Then eventually, they will come back to us as an updated version, and we will approve or disapprove, but most likely approve and codify that version. Then at that point in time, we move forward, reaching out, making sure bodies are aware.
So this is essentially a draft for the governance committee to take forward. One more. Can the audit committee, is it under, is it under a committee? Or does it have that?
Okay, that's where it lived before.
I think it's under operations.
Yes.
That's where it lived before, and somehow it got kind of pushed around. So I didn't think this was really here.
That's what I was, that's what I was asking. Is that supposed to be gone because it's living on that?
Well, so that's where we got confused, remember? So we had, these are the district subcommittees, and these are the committees.
These are the liaison. Oh, we'll call them both subcommittees.
What were they called?
District. District committees.
Yeah, so these are the committees, and these were the subcommittees.
So those are district committees, those are board subcommittees. So Kim, are you saying that district committees should not say audit? Because you serve on audit if you're on or a subcommittee for infrastructure.
Correct. And so the actual commit, subcommittee is the audit committee with the auditors, the district representative.
Are we all kind of feeling that way? Because I can use that information when we need to.
That's what I was thinking. Because I think, because that's how it's been.
Yeah.
It's been Saturday and Tara for the last two years, and then Anna and me and these two young ladies. But that has always been under that committee, as we all be together.
So then we have one, two, three, four, five, six positions. And then a seventh board member can take to, like, do you get two ex officios?
Aren't there two and six?
There's only six though. I'm on bond.
Three, four, five, six.
Because Randy doesn't start on one, other than safety. The board president.
Right, you're on bond now. But our intent was, we don't always have to have two.
There are two on safety and security. It's more a jury and me. My role is statewide, no choice.
But it's because we have, they have, whether they, whatever.
Right, so technically, we have six official positions, and one board member is off the hook or can join another one.
Right, so I, this time I joined bond because it's something I would like to know about, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, cool, that helps.
Yeah, I was just trying to quickly submit together.
District, and we have, we'll share it with Tara.
If you look at the old charts, the one, the one that she's holding, the audit committee was there in the bottom, under that last one, because it initially said finance.
We need a chart with districts, and then a chart with the subcommittees, no?
Yes.
You need to see this smaller.
Roadmaps that will.
Yeah, you're going to have, you know how you have this beautiful layout?
Yeah.
You have the same thing. It's ex officio committees and board subcommittees. Okay? This beautiful, like.
Chart.
So now we're going to have laminated folders that we lay out everywhere. I'm just kidding, please don't do that.
But I think that last maybe we go back.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says finance.
You say finance and operations?
Finance and programs.
I'm at the top.
Final piece that I had put together for us is a copy of the most recent circuit evaluation. A piece that I was most interested in, it's making sure we all got, is, or is there, is the calendar with January board meeting, when we handled the contingent. So as this committee, subcommittee audit group, whatever we're going to call it, is finalizing the evaluation tool, we want to keep in mind the dates that are here and working with that. And so we are in the process now, and we'll continue this process through, leading up to that January board meeting where we handle the final part of the survey. Okay, any other comments or thoughts?
I have a clarification. So the, I need to go back to the plan that we're going to develop. If we're going to have the governance committee be a part of that, can we just schedule a meeting where we go in the conference room and work on the plan instead of having to do a work study? Because I feel like we could at least, Tara, Cass, Marjorie, and myself kind of sketch out like our thoughts? And then we can put our committee together instead of, because I feel like in here, it might get a little restrictive of just being able to brainstorm.
I think that was this plan, in the next month, you wanted us to work with you. And then we take it to the board in the work study in November.
Well, I think we've got a lot of things coming up.
Oh, okay.
And so we're getting ready to send out all the facility planning gates. And then we have that joint meeting with Farmers Branch. So I think that would put two meetings, that's on the 19th.
Right.
And also want to do some due diligence research and.
I think in November is too soon. So let's make the work study on pause, and if you guys are ready, then great.
I think that way it'll give us more flexibility to schedule some time and kind of put together some thoughts in kind of where we're going, you know, just.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, because I don't know that I.
These are on my calendar, yeah.
I don't know that I can get a lot that month, 14th. And I don't like to not complete an assignment, but.
Cassandra and Marjorie, and tell, get together and say what works well for us. And Dr. E., you support that, work for that, and if it's December, you, you come up with the most effective time.
Yeah, just so that we can have the initial conversation. So we'll get together on just a date, and I think that will work better.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll fill Tara in.
Good.
Okay.
You got this, the little chart, we should need that up on your calendar.
Okay, so yeah, so you have to assume that is, so this is the same thing as that service banquet or?
Service awards.
You are having a calendar. This is, you are going to be at one of these tables. Your name is next to the table you will be at to hand out to the teachers of that many years, their voucher and a pin. So somebody want to come and go, right, so sit down, dinner, right?
And two people will be at the five-year table, because there are a lot of people at that one.
Yes, so both Eliana and Cass will be at the five-year.
And we're really excited to honor, because we usually just included 10 years and up. And I felt like five years is a huge increment. And just to see how many people will be coming in, and we will give them a pin and then the voucher for their incentive. And I think we get to see them all in a more relaxed setting, but come and go. And I think it's going to be exciting. I mean, we'll try something, instead of just a sit-down meal. I'm kind of excited for the, just a new way to celebrate our teachers, so.
I think it's a way to celebrate the five years.
Yes, that is a milestone.
Yeah, we should celebrate them.
We also want to be sure that you've got on your calendars, the November 19th, the City of Farmers Branch is invited, our school board, to attend the Joint City Farmers Branch, CFBISD meet. So just be sure you've got that on your calendar, it's a six o'clock start. And with that, I think, unless I've got something, well, I'll wrap my gavel and call it closed, to be adjourned at 8:20. Thank you, everyone.